I apply to the matrix to be replied that United States of America Consider Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, those of you who are here, um, make sure you sign in. We will, uh, move to the end. Oh yeah, we are being recorded. Uh, consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, public comment, is this the time for any of you guys if you have something to say? Um, you can say it, if it's something on the agenda in the action items, you can wait and we will discuss it then. Be sure you don't talk about any personnel matters at this time, is there anybody that has anything to say? Okay. Um, go on.
Alright, so short report because it is summer and while it seems like there's not a lot going on, there is a ton going on. So first of all, summer school is going very well, the kids are having a wonderful time and the teachers seem to be having fun too. Uh, they are studying the ocean and making all kinds of interesting things to eat and doing some art projects and learning a lot about critters. So they're, they're having a good time with that. The last day is August 7th and during that last week, they will be having an end of summer barbecue, so end of summer school barbecue, which is a fun thing and they do that every time. It's super fun to go, parents come, kids are there, it's fun, it's family event. Um, regarding other things that are happening, yesterday I had two really productive meetings with two groups of staff members, so we worked on the schedule for the year, the daily schedule, and we also worked on updating the school handbook, the staff handbook. So we spent three hours in the morning and three hours in the afternoon, the people that helped us were, the teams were for handbook, Mr. Connors, Mrs. Delong, Ms. Hanson and myself. And for the scheduling review, Mr. Brown, Mr. Connors, Mrs. Delong, Ms. Hanson, Mrs. Mutulovich and myself. So we made great progress, I feel like we did really well and I'm excited, I hope by next week that I will have all of that finalized and I'll be able to send it back to them for final review. Um, the other thing that's going on that is gonna take me a long time and it's not due till September is the Title I audit. So another requirement from OPI, I hope you have one and all of the things we've done since we had the last audit and make sure that I have everything in order and that we are following all the rules. So that is many, many things to do, it'll probably take me thirty-five, forty hours to get it done. So I'm working on that, so while I said there's not a lot going on, there's always a lot going on. Um, but that's my, my brief report for right now.
Okay.
Oh, you know what, I have one more thing to say, sorry, I lied. Um, so employment, we are still looking for a library Title I person, we had two interviews over the course of the last few days. One of those people turned out to be an amazing applicant for fifth grade, so we are going to offer the position to her and we'll have to have a special board meeting to do that, so she said she would accept based on board approval. She'll be really dynamic teacher, she has experience, she has really strong math skills, so she'll be excellent for her fifth grade, so, um, we'll schedule a meeting and hopefully have, I've got two medical concerns, the best learner for a possible title, so, uh, for a library title, so hopefully we'll get it all together within the next week or so. Now I'm finished.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Um, I don't have our reports for me, sorry. I guess I'll just ask if anybody had any questions on the reports that were attached to the agenda. I think the only, there was only a couple of things probably of note, I'm gonna open them up here. Uh, one was the PJ club, if you notice I had to move some expenditures right at the end of the year because that's a cash bond and it can't end in the negative and I know everybody's like, how did it all of a sudden go in the negative? Part of that is that June is a really short month, so we don't have very many days of PJ club, right? Also, it's that we don't write the check out of the credit card clearing fund in the month of June, and this is just a reminder, we never do that because we have fees for the Tuition Express credit card processing account that hit in June, July and August, and in July, we have no money coming in. So if I write the check out of the clearing fund, then there's nothing to pay those fees with when they hit in July, so I just leave any June money sitting in credit card clearing. So if you noticed on the credit card clearing balancing, um, I have to open it, sorry, but it had a balance of like two hundred and some dollars. Credit card clearing count. Had a balance of two hundred and twenty-eight dollars and fifty-seven cents sitting in there. So I could, you know, move some of it, but it, I found that it just makes more sense to just leave it alone until we get into August and then I write a check, so that's why I had to adjust out some of those expenditures at the very end of the fiscal year, so that we didn't end up, what was it, two hundred, two hundred bucks or something like that?
Twenty-eight fifty-seven.
So it was, it was a small number, so I'm unconcerned, I think we're still sitting in a good spot with that. I, I don't have-
It's a pretend loss.
What's that?
It's a pretend loss.
It's a pretend loss, yeah, we didn't actually lose, we're just kinda holding the funds to make sure that we don't go in the, in the red through the summer with our fees. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I don't think there's anything else of note, I highlighted on the balancing funds where we had, um, where I've done the cash requests with OPI but haven't received the funds yet, which is pretty typical, but just so you guys can kinda see what that looks like.
The big one's that Title I, sixty-two thousand and a half.
Yeah. And that grant goes until the end of September, so it crosses fiscal years anyway, so it's not a concern to be, you can be in the hole in a specific granted Fund 15, we can't be cash in the hole in the fund, but we can be in the hole as far as that's concerned. We have the cash to support it, let's put it that way. And then I just pulled out that cash report, so it was two hundred and sixty-three dollars of expenses, so if you think about it, you're talking about forty bucks is what the PJ club was off for a year. So, and really, we're not trying to make a moneymaker out of that, we're trying to give something to our, you know, to our parents to be able to have their kids here, so forty bucks, we should all be pretty happy with that, that's pretty darn close. Cut the, cut that about as close as we could possibly cut it. Okay, that's more than I usually talk, do you guys have any questions? Okay, perfect.
Okay. Move on to the action agenda. Uh, personnel issues, we have a classified staff wage increase, um, we kinda talked about it at budget meeting. Where they came across with the proposal, we kinda kicked things around a little bit, changed their matrix a little bit on the classifieds, uh, to make it, make more sense. And then offered them a five percent, or gave them a five percent, um, there's really no, uh, negotiation, but we gave them a five percent increase off the base and then moved people around, so, uh, I need a, a motion to accept the classified wage increase in, in new matrix, and Josh, you probably, since you were there, should give that initial.
Um, yeah, I'll make the motion to approve the classified staff wage, um, that the approval of the matrix-
Yeah, matrix. Staff, yeah.
I'll second.
That's been moved and seconded, is there any questions about it or discussion?
Um, I was just wondering why we're simplifying this matrix so far.
Because it was. If you, if you ever saw the classified matrix, it was like five or six lines or seven lines.
Well, I did watch it to be honest, so-
Yeah, I studied it a little bit.
Yeah, it was, uh, there was no real-
No rationales.
Yeah.
That's why to move up the range.
It left too much room for subjectivity, in my opinion, and I think that was one of the biggest things that we talked about, was it's too subjective, right? It's very basic-
That's definitely removed now.
Yeah, there's no, there's no subjectivity now, it's very objective now, what's your position, this is where you fall in the matrix, I think before, there was so much room for the individual to negotiate what they do and what they're, what they bring to the table to kinda move them on a lane, which is relatively inappropriate for a wage matrix, you should be able to move vertically based on experience, but not necessarily horizontally, if that makes sense. I think everybody that was there agreed with that across the board, otherwise we wouldn't have looked at changing it, but it was very confusing for all parties. I don't think it's confusing anymore.
No, looks a lot better. It's nice and simple and from here on out, everybody knows where they sit on the matrix, there's no guesses of where you're gonna end up every year. And there's also not gonna be anymore, well, I really think I should be here because this is what I do, so you'll all be, so I, I, I like the way we set it up. So, um, any other discussion? If not, it's moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? And it passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Um, so then I will need a motion to approve all the contracts that I just signed.
I'll make a motion to approve the classified contracts as presented.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Um, the last one, um, Shane Speck, um, completed her master's, uh, degree over the, over the last year and so she will be, um, moving over on her, in her contract, and so we need a motion to approve that new contract.
I'll make a motion to approve S. Speck amended fiscal year twenty-six contract.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Thank you. Motion passes.
Hey guys, if I have a contract question or request, is it too late since we didn't have a discussion on it?
Oh, on your contract itself?
Yeah.
Is it just for you, like, or?
You'd have to bring it back to a next board meeting, like, to appeal it.
What if it wasn't asked about to have discussion though? There, we weren't asked, is there a discussion, so I didn't discuss it.
What, what's?
Um, I just wanted to request consideration for a start date on, uh, Tuesday, August 12th, that is actually flexible up to a certain amount of hours rather than a, a fixed start date of Tuesday, the 19th, because there are some projects on Infinite Campus that Trish and I collaborate on.
Oh, that start date stuff, that, that stuff, that's between you and-
Okay.
We, we can discuss.
Okay, awesome.
Because the contract basically is a, is your hourly wage, so-
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yeah, so your, your total dates up to one hundred and ninety-nine days will not change.
Okay.
So if you need to start earlier, you can do that.
Okay.
Okay, policy amendments.
We had a riveting policy meeting?
I'll bet it was.
It was, it was easy this time and not so much, I mean, sometimes we have these really good discussions, this was a pretty, pretty quick meeting, we were like-
Okay. So, um, I guess this still need a little bit, I didn't- What am I gonna do, I can't look.
Yeah, um-
What, what did you think, anything we really think?
I mean, there was some proposed changes, Lacy and Donna left, 'cause I didn't write down the specific changes, I mean, they're all here. Uh, let's see, non-resident.
They were all amendments, nothing was new, no new policies, all amendments to current policies. What, do we have six policies that we amended? Joe probably hasn't, Andy, he's telling you.
Six, seven, or seven.
Something.
See if I get any notes on what we actually adopted. They're all recommended changes.
Nothing was required, they're all recommended, we read through them at length.
So there are, there are changes that were recommended by MTSB.
Correct. And then we go over them with fine tooth comb when they're recommended, because we don't wanna add anything that we don't like.
Well, we didn't, we didn't get to these yet, that's why I was looking to see which ones we actually went through. We've got some potentially meeting or what's coming with the drug testing, the phone usage.
We had to schedule a second meeting, 'cause you can only do policy for so many hours at a time.
Human sexuality, but that was a recommended change we did not adopt. They, they made a recommendation on changing, what is it, health-
Health enhancement.
Health enhancements.
To only human sexuality, we're like, nope, we're not going there, not changing it to only that.
Our policy committee vetoed that.
Thank you.
It becomes so restrictive to, like, you can't teach anything else, I mean, that's so restrictive.
Yeah, so-
And it, and it creates-
Our policy committee felt very strongly.
We have enough problems with parents the way it is.
Well, plus we already have an opt-out policy, we have an opt-out policy in our handbook, if parents don't want their kids to possess paid funding, they can opt out.
You have to do it.
Okay. I'm, I'm fine.
I would, I would say next month, when we are, whenever we bring the next one, so there's probably some that will happen.
I wouldn't get in there, sorry.
Well, we can't.
So, okay, um, so somebody off the committee wanna give a, um, promotion to, for those amendments?
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve the policy amendments as presented.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? I guess I should've asked for comments on that one, but, um, it seems pretty cut and dry usually, stuff like that, we just don't really have a choice anyway. Okay. Okay, Dawn, explain the next one, first grade experience.
Did you all vote, I'm sorry?
Yes, everybody voted in the first.
Alright, so, uh, since I've been working here, which has been three years now, every single year, we experience, I wouldn't say an abundance of first graders, but probably twenty, twenty-five percent of the first graders end up in the office regularly for four to five weeks crying. So they have some anxiety that, uh, when they come to school, and some of it is they just don't want, because summer was there and they, they don't want to leave their parents and some of it is because first grade is different from kindergarten, it's way different as far as, um, you have less playtime, you have more structured learning time. So one of the things that I thought would be helpful, because the kindergarten teachers have experience days where they have their kids come in, I thought it would be helpful to have the first graders also have that, those experience days, so they can meet with their teacher and also have one other child, so it would be two children, two to three children in each group of kids and spend an hour just learning about their classroom, meeting their teacher, getting to be a little bit calmer about coming to school. And my hope is that we will alleviate some of that scariness that, that kids are, I don't know if it's scariness, or like I said, if they just don't want to be at school because they had a great summer, or they don't wanna leave their parents, if they're apprehensive, I don't know what their reasons are for, for being upset, but I want to try and alleviate that, so I thought that by trying this this year, by piloting the first grade experience days, that maybe we can alleviate some of that stress on, on the little guys and on their parents too. So, um, I did talk to Ms. Martin about this, uh, and we would like to give it a shot. So it'll, it'll differ from kindergarten, because the kindergartners come and they are one-on-one with their teacher and the first graders will be two to three kids on line. So I think that'll just be really helpful and give them excitement about school, help them to relax and help them to, to be, oh, I get to start school in just a couple of days, you know, so that's what we want, we don't want kids to be nervous. So I would like to try that, I'd like to board, like, like for the board to approve that.
How many days?
Uh, so it'll be that Thursday, Friday, no, that Wednesday, Thursday, sorry, Wednesday, Thursday, so the 27th and 28th.
Before school's done.
And, and so, right, so that will be, so school starts on the 27th-
Okay.
For everybody, and the first graders would come just for one hour on the 27th or the 28th, depending on how they're scheduled, and then they'll all come on the Friday.
Um, and you have a plan for kind of structuring with the parents, because it's kinda short notice for parents?
So the teacher would contact the, contact the parents to let them know what's happening.
Okay.
So it's the 27th, August 27th, not July, August 27th.
Right, well, but it's still short notice, I mean, anytime you try something new, it's, but, I don't have a problem with it, I, I-
So, Dawn, maybe I'm just not, because I wasn't staring at the calendar, so school starts the 27th?
Yes.
All kids come for their normal day?
All kids come for their normal day, but the first graders would only come for one hour on that day, depending on what time they're scheduled for. And the rest of them will come the next day for one hour, depending on what time they're scheduled for, so they come in groups of two or three. And then on Friday, all the first graders would come to school for their first day of school as a class.
And the kindergartners do experience days also, so they won't be there on Monday, Saturday, or all of them.
Okay. Thank you.
Trish, are you tired of being a first grader?
You can say yeah, that's okay.
Do we think it has anything to do with the transition of classrooms in the middle of the year, maybe?
No, no, it's been since I've been working here, since I first started here, we've had kids crying at the office every day.
I think it has to do with, like Dawn said, all of a sudden it's very structured, you can't do-
They don't have nap time anymore.
They don't have nap time. I want my mom to, um, go to school.
But just getting to, to be with their teacher and to know their teacher a little bit and to know that their teacher is going to be kind to them, I, I just think that that will just help them, just to set them up for success. And, and we can try it, and if it doesn't work, then we don't have to do it next year, but I just would like to give it a try.
Ms. Martin scared me if I was a first grader.
And a part of it is that they're little, they're coming to school and they're exhausted, I mean, that's a part of it too, but it goes so long into the year, when it goes five or six weeks into the year and kids are crying every day at the office, that's, that's something.
It's 'cause they love to come to the office?
Trish is calling mother and sister.
Well, you know, that's what it is.
Yeah, you can see that, you know, take a nap, you're alright.
You're okay, we can do it that time.
There's a screen, just look at the screen.
Do you think that one hour for one day before going to school full days is gonna make-
I think it does make a difference, we can, like I said, in kindergarten, they do it, that each kid has the teacher for one hour by themselves and then they're all excited about coming in this way, the, the first graders will come in, they will already know some of the kindergartners that are there, and they'll be with another child. I think it will make a difference, and like I said, we can try it, and if, if we still have kids crying into the sixth week of school, we have a bigger problem.
And then they can put their, um, school supplies away and just-
And know where they're gonna be, yeah.
Calmness instead of everything it was.
Well, as, as far as I'm concerned, I mean, is this affecting any other, the number of hours they're supposed to have?
No, they get double the number of hours they're supposed to have, well, almost, only get two-thirds.
Okay.
Mostly just needs board approval, 'cause it goes outside of the current calendar, it's a change to the current calendar.
So they're only required seven hundred and twenty hours a year, and the fourth through eighth graders are required one thousand and eighty hours per year, so-
If, if Mrs. Martin is willing to do it that way, I see the problem.
Yeah, I guess my only other thought back to the, obviously, your question, I mean, what, so these kids will come to school for an hour and parents will, that's the, that'd be, you know, the parent thing.
Daycare.
As a parent, that would, if they were gonna set on school, as a parent, as a, if I was a parent and I was having a kid going into first grade and I already had my schedule written down and say, oh, these are the days, because some jobs make you do three months in advance, how many days?
That's my only concern for how.
This is just, I'm just being the devil's advocate at this point in time, I'm sorry, but, and they're like, hey, oh, they start on the 27th, this is great, but, and if, if you say, oh, you need to be there for an hour, then they have to go and find daycare for them.
And it's only one of the days.
Two of the days necessarily, because then they might have to-
That's what I'm saying, if they're, it's, they're, they're only coming for an hour of those two days.
Then parents might have to miss work again.
That's my only concern is of, is that way.
So, so this doesn't have to be a, I mean, they, they can have that option to come, or they can wait until, they can wait to come in.
Yeah.
But if, if we know now, we can send a notification out to the parents and just say, you will be contacted-
I guess.
By the teacher.
Yeah, and if the, if there's a lot of parents that say, hey, wait, we have, you know, when school starts, we, this is our plan, then we're gonna have to figure out something to take care of a bunch of first graders for two days.
Well, and I think it'll just be up to the parents, I mean, if you give them enough notice, the parents can decide if their kid is a whiny baby and they need to have a diaper towel.
We're being recorded.
Oh, I got four kids, it's all good, I can be honest. Well, no, I think it's just, it's often-
You have some kids that sometimes are whiny babies?
Oh, for sure. But yeah, it's parents, you know, it's, it's optional, if you give enough time, they get beside their kidneys.
But we wouldn't take attendance until, for the first graders, until that-
Right.
That first day of school, which would be the second of September, is when we would take attendance, so it's not like kids would be docked for attendance for this.
Right, yeah, exactly.
Um, but if I, if, if this is approved, then I can send a notification out to parents and just say, this will be happening, your teacher will be contacting you.
Right. Yeah, I guess the way, yeah, the way to, to do it is the same, we, we've decided that school won't start until the, the second for first graders, but we're offering-
Experience days for first graders.
So if you're doing it the 27th and 28th, then they just not come to school on Friday?
Oh, no, they, they would come the 29th, no, they'd come the 29th.
Okay, that's like going, you're giving them three full days off.
Yeah, I was picturing the kindergarten schedule in my head, it's the 29th, yes, thanks Judy.
Then I should just be more in there, out of the room.
Yeah, they would start the 29th.
Okay.
When we do the experience days for kindergarten, is that a one-hour time slot or is it longer?
It's a one-hour time slot.
It's one hour of one kid and one of their, yeah, instead of two or three kids.
So if it's two or three kids, could the time slot be two hours?
No, no, 'cause they're, they're more, they're more than twenty kids in there, twenty-five kids. So it'll take two days to get through them, which is why they're doubling up.
Alright.
So I just didn't wanna just make this by myself, I thought I would ask, ask the board to-
I will make a motion to approve the first grade experience days.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, we've already discussed, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Uh, seventh grade into literacy curriculum.
Alright, so Mrs. Delong and I have been looking at curriculum for, well, for the entire year, going over various curriculum things for middle school. The current curriculum that they have for ELA is twenty-five years old and it is definitely behind the times and doesn't have, uh, materials and examples that are, are pertinent to today's world, so, uh, the particular curriculum that Mrs. Delong would like to use is called Into Literacy and it, it goes right along with our Into Reading, so we now have Into Reading for grades K through six and Into Literature would be the next one for seventh grade, so it would be aligned, and then next year, we'd be looking at getting the eighth grade curriculum, because learning two curriculums in one year in the same subject is a lot. So, uh, this would be a six-year curriculum, and, uh, I've looked it over and the, the books have, the books that the kids get have a lot of really, um, fun, project-oriented things that they can do, and there's an, an online component, that's a big component of this also.
That quote is for the full six year?
Yes, that's for six years.
Less, less than a thousand dollars a year?
Yes. That's for seventh grade.
And then next year, you're gonna propose a-
Next year, we would look at eighth grade, yes. And so one of the things that we have to do is, uh, make sure our curriculum is aligned and we are, um, our student scores are, are coming up as far as reading and ELA because of this grade curriculum program that we have and we wanna keep building.
That's alright. Can we find a whole bunch of other curriculums, like, with that cost?
Well, the counseling one's free, we're talking about.
Thirty thousand dollars for three years.
It's only one grade, Bob, that's why.
Yeah, so, but it's six years, so that's just a price.
Six years is, I mean, we're, if we're setting, or six years, that's, I'm gonna run on, would you say a twenty-five-year-old?
Yes.
you say, twenty-five-year-old language?
I think that's my last.
That's totally in the times.
Totally. You brought it back, Lacey, way to go.
So I am asking for your approval for this curriculum, please. Mrs. DeLong and I are asking.
I will make a motion to approve the seventh grade interliteracy curriculum, quote, for six years.
I'll second. Sorry, Joe. All the job for us.
Moved and seconded, is there any other discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you. And Mrs. DeLong, thank you, even though she's not here.
She really cares.
She does really care, she does. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the counseling curriculum, and Mrs. Speck and myself reviewed, I think, four different curriculums this year. And we started reviewing actually when Mrs. Moore was here, at the end of her term, and we looked at a bunch of them, we couldn't find anything that was great. So one of the things that we want to do is really build on anti-bullying, and make sure that all of our kids know what bullying is, and make sure that they know how to prevent it, how to respond to it. Just using that as a life skill. The other thing is, is for our integrated strategic action plan that we have, a part of that is to make kids safe and secure here, and providing anti-bullying resources. So Mrs. Speck and I found this program.
It's free?
It's free, and it's called Overcoming Obstacles. Here it is, right here, Overcoming Obstacles. And so it's divided for grades K through two, three through five, and six through eight. K through two with a focus on listening, fairness, and coping skills. For three through five with a focus on empathy, perseverance, and conflict resolution. And for six through eight, communication, decision-making, and goal-making, goal-setting. Plus, they have more concepts at each grade level. A lot of great lessons, all the way from start to follow-up within a lesson. So you have your introduction, and you have your lesson, and you have some follow-up discussion, and how does it actually pertain to what kids are doing now? I think it would be excellent to try it for a year and see if it works. It is free, and if we like it, we can keep going with it. So kind of pilot it here in our school, and then there's no cost for it. So if you do want to keep going, you can keep going.
Proof.
So I need a motion to approve the use of this curriculum, please.
There you go, Joe.
I'll make a motion to approve the counseling curriculum, Overcoming Obstacles.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, thank you very much.
Mr. Second over there changed.
We need to find more free stuff.
Mrs. Speck and I, thank you.
Okay, facilities discussion, Joe.
So we did have a facilities meeting. We sat down and had our master list and kind of reviewed everything, and, you know, reassigned years that were more appropriate. I feel like we got a very good list made, and basically it's a priority list now, four J to go down and make the improvements on there. I feel that the next step is to, like, get an estimate or get quotes on the bigger projects so we kind of know, have a forecast, if you will, of what we need for facility needs over the next five years.
Right. Things we can do ourselves, just together, okay, this is the materials costs and stuff like that. Because as far as painting and stuff, but that, like, that west, northeast, northwest wall, the front wall, it's gonna take, yeah, but it's gonna be, that's a project.
You tuck it outside?
Yeah.
So that guy was supposed to be here today to look at that for siding?
Yeah.
He's gonna be here tomorrow? The roofing people were here last week. I haven't heard nothing back from them, they looked at the gym and the portable, see what we could do to fix that stuff.
Well, you got those screws and stuff?
Oh, they wanted, they were talking about putting bigger screws in the gym.
Okay.
And the...
Those screws would be a tight number of tight.
Yeah, so they're thinking maybe bigger screws would help. And then the portable has, doesn't run off, they don't have big enough lid for the water to run off, so it's running down the side, get behind the boards. So I haven't heard back from them, so I don't know what they found out.
You can figure that out for a while during the summer, but when it starts freezing, it's gonna start to be a real problem. One thing we might want to think about on that portable, because it's such a shallow, is getting some tapes and living on the top of it.
Oh, yeah.
To keep it liquid on, along the edges.
I did run some caulking down the crack that was getting the water behind it, so hopefully...
It's not leaking on the inside, though.
No.
We actually put on the list possibility of pitched roof on the portable, just to, you know, see what it'll cost, and that makes a lot of issues go away.
Right.
Discuss later.
And we had concrete guys out for the sidewalk we need to the portable.
Right.
I haven't heard back from them yet either, so hopefully so.
Your mower's running okay?
Is that?
Your mower's running okay, never?
Just running, yeah.
So far, won't replace it till we have?
I haven't loaded up yet.
And it hasn't stopped going up till it's ready? That's why I got it, the guy didn't, he thought it was, transmission was going out, so...
Alright.
Never a problem.
Seems to work on it.
The only thing I noticed as I was walking down today is we got some screws on those big steps that are starting to lift.
Yeah, I need to get some larger diameter screws for that, and take a bunch of them out, replace them.
Just hate to see somebody, yeah, catch them.
That's been an ongoing, they keep coming up.
They back out every year.
Yep.
How are those steps now?
They replaced them once.
Oh, did they?
That wasn't the original that, that...
Okay, I think that's really nothing we need to do on the facilities, so... Got a letter from the auditor?
We do have a letter from our auditor, because he is late on getting our audits to us. We've already gotten a nasty gram from OPI on our FY23 audit, because our audits are due. Typically, by the July board meeting, we have the audit from the prior fiscal year. So we're a year behind on having our audit, I should have my FY24 audit. I have had my audit, like, my auditor has been on site, as my office folks can attest to, and I've given our auditor everything he needs to do the audit.
He had a tour of the building, too. And he said, wow, this has good bones. That's what he said.
And he is working on them, but they are not done. So he did write a letter, I have forwarded the letter to OPI. They have responded, nothing's happening, we're not getting any kind of black marks or anything bad from anybody, but I just figured it was worth updating the board as to where we are. And he told me he will have them both to me by the August board meeting, so I'm hopeful that we will.
So is it just on him?
Yeah, and I am, I am not recommending changing auditors.
Right.
This is the first time he's ever been late on our audit, and everybody has situations. So I'm, I'm not using one time as like, this is, oh, no, we need to jump ship.
No.
And so I'm not recommending a change, I just am alerting the board as to why you haven't seen it yet.
Oh, I'm glad he sent a letter.
Yeah, and he's been super communicative, like, it wasn't just, oh, here's a letter. He's been talking to me all year about where he's at with working on the audit. So it's not as though we're not communicating.
Okay, cool.
I have one more thing that just came in the mail today for correspondence, it is a thank you note. Dear Smith Valley Scholarship Committee, thank you so much for selecting me to receive this Smith Valley Scholarship. It will be a great help as I move on to the next chapter in my life studying to be a veterinarian. Thanks again, Emily Hall.
Cool. Okay, special discussion. Somebody wants to have a work day?
Yeah, so, we need, and so Jay and I talked about this, and getting the community involved...
Let Jay talk.
Getting the community involved, so I'm excited, so this is my moment, then he can talk. So getting the community involved and letting them help us, lets us know that we want them to be involved with our school, we want them to be a part of our school, we want them to just, you know, make the school theirs, right? So we have some things that need to be done, and when I was thinking of community work day, I was thinking of getting those benches in the gym sanded and painted. These kids get splinters from them regularly, doing the same thing for the outside benches, so sand and paint all the benches, getting some groundwork done, maybe do some paint work for trim inside. It can be, you can have hot dogs and ice cream when it's all done with, like, if we do it morning, we can do hot dogs and ice cream, that would be fun. Just to make it a fun thing, we can play music, I mean, just get the community involved and just let them know. So I figure like, just a morning, like, three or four hours, community work day, and they can come when they want, if they want. It would be nice to know if they're coming, so we would know how many hot dogs and how much ice cream to buy. But if we have extra, we can feed the staff hot dogs and ice cream. Yay, staff! So I'm excited about getting them involved and just letting them know, hey, we want you to love our school, we want it to be great for you, and if you would like to help us, we would love to have you help us.
How would you get that out there?
So we, so we can send out a constant contact, we can put it on the reader board, we can put it on Facebook, on our school Facebook, just to get the word out. Jay, what do you think?
I think this what you said, good.
Yay, Jay.
Sounds like you need a lot of screws, like, you want all that?
But especially when we send home the climate survey of people, we got a three across the board from students and parents and community members about liking their school on a scale of one to five, about liking their school building. So having them help us improve our facilities, I think it's a great, great way to get them involved.
We have another one to let them get involved with.
So that's just, you know, that's work that they can do without, without us putting anybody in danger or risk.
The splinters are to keep the kids from moving around too much on the bench.
So, yeah, so that's what I was thinking and hoping for. So we would need to set a date for that, of course, it'll all be volunteer, if people can come, they can come.
I think just pick Saturday, I mean, this...
They like to come see Kelsey to get splinters out, because Kelsey's our splinter removal room. Very good at it.
We need another category for this.
Tell everybody that one.
That part is not public knowledge.
That's not public knowledge.
So we could either go, if we went, I am actually taking the first week of August off, I'm taking vacation.
Get some ill.
So, thanks, we always feel exciting. So if we went the sixteenth of August, that would be like the fair week.
You can't do the sixteenth or the whatever, ninth?
Ninth and sixteenth.
So actually, yeah, I can't, I mean, you guys could do it, I'd like to be here on the ninth.
You can't do the ninth either. That's the first day of fair.
Yeah, that's the first day of fair.
So you're looking at August twenty-third.
Twenty-third, I can be here, but I don't, that's not, that's a good deal.
The twenty-third would be like right before school starts, so everybody would kind of have their school hat on, something that we can plan, if we would like to.
I'll be in school then. Does it have to be a Saturday?
Yeah, could we do it?
Doesn't have to be a Saturday.
Could we do it even?
Well, if, yeah, you could do it on a weekday, you think... You could do a couple of days, I don't, it doesn't really matter, I mean...
We could do like an afternoon, like, four o'clock or five o'clock, and then it'll start cooling down, like, five to eight or something, and have hot dogs and a little bit of work session.
Yeah, people, weekends are pretty important too at this time of year.
Yes, summer school ends at seven, so if we did it the following week...
That's fair week.
That's fair week.
That's like, when you're fair, that's your community is very fair, right?
It really needs to be after the nineteenth, I think.
Or before the ninth, if we thought that that's enough time to advertise.
Yeah, that'd be sure, very good, people thinking that way.
I mean...
I like that, you're doing it close to school starting, because...
I mean, on some level, sometimes shorter notice is better.
Yeah.
Gives them more time to think about it.
You don't forget.
Right. So if we did, because today's the fifteenth, if we did like the twenty-ninth or the thirty-first in the evening, like, four to eight?
I think, really, I mean, this isn't something we have to decide. I think you and Jay sit down and figure out your day, along with your crew that is gonna, and just start advertising, I just don't think...
So it's gonna be an ad lib crew, like, I don't have any crew in mind, just whoever wants to show up.
But...
Alright, so I'll ask Kelsey if you can help post it on Facebook, that would be great. So I'll contact you like tomorrow after I have a chance to talk to Jay.
Okay.
That work?
Yeah, you can put it on the reader board, that, so see if you tell me.
So, the last thing is, just for you guys, information, the grievance is over, as far as we know, and so, and that's as far as we're gonna talk about it, so...
Alright.
Anybody have anything else?
Yes, I am excited for this year. I just feel like, like, we just have great, I'm sorry, you guys are laughing. I feel like we just have great people working here and a great team, and I'm excited.
We have some really good new teachers coming in, I do, I will say that. I think Joe would agree. Well, those who we've hired so far are pretty exciting to think about coming.
Can I say something real quick?
Yes, ma'am.
My grandsons had the guy that we hired for music at Rankin, and when they found out that he was hired here, they were over the top jealous of Daley.
Well, they could come to school here.
Well, we're working on that. But they were, they were very excited for Daley, because they said he is super cool. So, yeah.
Alright, so everyone, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Enjoy your summer.